I'd like to call the January ninth, 2023 special village board meeting to order. Heidi, will you read us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Heidi. Roll call, please, Allison. Trustee Shonett?
Here.
Trustee Walter?
Here.
Trustee Lindy?
Here.
Trustee Heron?
Here.
Trustee Bonnie?
Here.
Trustee White is absent. President Koenig?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Up first, we have executive session. We need to leave the room momentarily to discuss litigation, but the board will return, so we're going to go into the conference room. And then we'll be back out to potentially take action. Onwards. Oh, I need a motion to move your right. Did I get a...? Thank you.
All for your law.
I know. Watch out for me, I'm dangerous. Can I get a motion to move to executive session?
So.
To discuss litigation?
So.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Gossip to second.
Second. I have a first, and a trustee here, and a second, and a trustee Bonnie. Roll call, please. Trustee Heron?
Aye.
Trustee Bonnie?
Aye.
Trustee Lindy?
Aye.
Trustee Walter?
Aye.
Trustee Shonett?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passed. Okay. We will be back.
I know.
We are back. Allison? Allison, do you want to do the roll call again? Okay. Will we do a roll call, please? Trustee Walter?
Here.
Trustee Shonett?
Here.
Trustee Lindy?
Here.
Trustee Heron?
Here.
Trustee Bonnie?
Here.
President Koenig?
Here.
And trustee White is still at. Okay, thank you. We're back in open session. We have a quorum. We are on item five, public hearing. We have no items under public hearing. Up next, we have equipments and presentations for the Town Center brochure. Linda Nav is here to give a presentation as to where we stand with the Town Center brochure. Allison is going to put it up on all the screens for everyone to see. I don't think around the block. But I do need my brochure. Hi, Linda. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Did everybody get the brochures? We did not print a hard copy in conserving paper, so there are a couple. If anybody needs an actual hard copy over what you see on the screen, let me down.
I'll take one just for me.
Thank you.
All right, we're presenting it over here. And what you're seeing right now is the latest and greatest product progress from our designer. Just to introduce myself, my name is Linda Nav, and I'm a sixteen-year resident here of Sugar Grove. I live in Lake Bliss Woods with my husband Todd and our two daughters. One is a senior and a freshman in Kalen High School. And I was very grateful to be asked to be part of the committee for the Town Center. And I wanted to just say and recognize all of the people who were on my committee with us, and that included trustee Sean Heron, trustee Heidi Lindy, Tony Special, Michael Passa, who is the economic development director, Walter Magde... Magde Zars. Sorry, I'm so mad at this. Walter?
Oh, no, not every time.
Of course, Jen Koenig, village president. And we did have, we had some residents, Susan Smith, Renee D., John Eager, Don Eby, and Ron Coe. Just a little bit of background of the Town Center Committee. As the village continues to grow and evolve, the challenge has been and continues to be how to maintain the growth and meet the needs and the desires of the residents while still maintaining the small-town charm for which the village is known. And for sixteen years, for many of you, if you're like me, you go out to different communities, you do your shopping, you go to different restaurants, you go elsewhere to do your business. And one of the things that we were tasked to do is to find a place that would resonate with all of the different needs of the community residents. Right? We heard it from many different people saying like, "Look, I moved here because I loved the small-town feel. I loved the rural community. I loved the close-knit feel. I love Bliss Woods. I love... I came from a small-town community. I came from the farmlands of Iowa. And I wanted to preserve that. I don't want it to feel like Naperville. I don't want it to feel like Fifty-Nine. But I still want some of the conveniences of being able to go out and have a beer with my husband on Friday night or having a place that I know that my daughters can go and hang out with their friends, and there's something for them to do." So what we were tasked to do is to find some balance and create a center that was going to meet the needs for the entire community. So high on the list of desires for our residents was to create a central gathering place and something that was going to create development opportunities for our community. The village board pursued discussions for additional municipal office space. As you know, the police department and the village board shares this space, and they were outgrowing this space, so there needed to be new space for the village board. And so you were looking for new space, so what we were trying to accomplish is to find a new place for the village board and new municipal areas. In June 2021, we defined a vision for the development. To start with, everyone who was on the board went back home and created a vision board to create our own collective vision, and then we came back in and put it all together. And what this brochure represents is that collective vision. So if we can go to the next page. This just talks a little bit about the Sugar Grove community. So the Sugar Grove community, you know, obviously I'm not going to go through this word for word, but it talks about our open spaces, our residential development, our attractive environmental setting. It tells about how we are in the crossroads of major roadways, how we have Alonti Community College, Bliss Woods, Hannaford Woods, the Aurora Municipal Airport. We have three golf courses, and we are ripe for development. Next page. "We are strategically located forty-five miles west of Chicago. We are the western neighbor of the second-largest city in Illinois. We have superior transportation access. We are planning for growth while keeping our charm and character." If I could underline that and highlight that in red. Very important to our community. "We have scenic, natural surroundings. And very important, we want to maintain a sense of community amongst our residents." Our proposed Town Center concept is pretty simple. We want to create a place for people within our community and surrounding communities to come here to shop, to gather and play, to dine, and to live. Those are the four basic concepts that we have. Now, we started this vision through our inspiration, which is Seaside, Florida. And anybody who knows Jen will know that she will talk nonstop about Seaside, Florida.
I'm sorry.
In fact, I believe you just came back from Seaside, Florida for two weeks. And if you go to the next page, Seaside, Florida, if you look at the top picture, that shows you kind of what our inspiration was. So Seaside, Florida has, at the top there, a structural building surrounded by green space, and that U shape or the horseshoe shape there is then retail spots. Right? It's walkable, integrated, open-air, multi-use development. And it's anchored by retail dining and leisure uses. And then, if you look at the bottom of the picture, green space. Your eye rests. Additional areas where residents can gather for recreation and strengthen community bonds. Next page. So this is West Clay, Indiana. This is also something that we love and we use as our example on our vision board. The Town Center, so the municipal building of village growth would anchor, would be the anchor of our village, our village Town Center. It would be two to three stories. It would provide the residents access to general village services, and it would feature conference rooms and other multi-use spaces. So if you think about it, think about where residents have to come to in order to do any of their municipal business, right? There's various different places that people go. Where they would go in our new Town Center concept, they would go where all of the action is. There's a reason for them to go there, for their city business, right? Right there, number one. Number two, who's the first customer in this Town Center concept? The villagers. You're buying right into, you're the first client, you're the first builder. Next page. So when we think about what we want this place to look like, we want it to be clean, storefront designs, classic awnings, very distinctive signage and lighting. We want plenty of storefront seating and charming street lamps. We don't want it to be kitschy. We don't want it to run out of style within the next five years. We want it to be classic. We want it, when people come to Sugar Grove, they remember it, they feel comfortable, they want to stick around. It's a place that they're just going to want to just window shop, hang out, and feel like it is someplace where it feels like home. Next page. Now, the streetscape design, it provides areas for movement, rest, window shopping, dining, and other sidewalk activities. So the three pictures here kind of depict what we're thinking. There's going to be wide sidewalks, people can walk. It offers a very pleasant environment for people to stroll, window shop. If you want to bike from one place to the other, you won't have to worry about crossing the street to go from one shop to the other as we have to today. Right? It gives you a place to pause and linger, so you're not rushing from one store to the other. And the ambiance stays in line with all of the community charm. Next page. "We also very much want to stay in line with Bliss Woods, natural landscaping, incorporate fountains and water features, maybe put a clock in there, sculptures, but make it very much like Illinois, natural, beautiful, easy on the eyes, butterflies, birds, that type of thing." It's one of the things that our residents most like about the community, is the natural landscaping. We do not want to lose that in our Town Center. Next page. Okay, so the Town Center, a place to shop. We want to be able to create interesting, quality retail opportunities. So we're not looking just for the next fast-food opportunity or the next, you know, shop that's like anywhere else. We want to create interesting opportunities. Next page. Okay, so what does that mean? So when we were thinking about the kinds of shops that we would put in our Town Center, we wanted to create an experience for people who come here. We want to create places that if you come here and visit these stores, every experience will be different the next time we come. So indoor activities, family-friendly, maybe it's an indoor golf course, maybe it's rock climbing, maybe they're ninja courses, but it's something for the entire family, and it's an experience that you do not replicate each time you go. Something different every time. Holistic wellness, right? Spa services, maybe it's health food, personal trainers, massages. But it's different every time you go. Something that is happening now is vintage fashion, right? So people are doing more upcycling of clothes. They're doing more eco-sustainability. And what that offers is the ability to have one of a kind, one of a kind products. Right? So every time you go into a store, it changes. You're not getting the same kind of product if you go into the Gap here. It's the same as a Gap, you know, two cities down. They're always different. They're always changing their merchandise. And it helps our clients be individuals. The same with boutique shops, right? They're small, independent retailers, high-quality, unique pieces, and they have strong customer service, or they tend to, and very strong product knowledge is important to their business model. So when we're thinking about the types of stores that we're bringing to the Town Center, it's all about the experience. It's not about just filling the space. It's about the experience that we create within the space for the people who are walking in the stores. I'm going to take a breath here.
Take a breath. Yeah, she's been doing a lot.
Does anybody have any questions?
What's the snow removal plan in Seaside, Florida?
They heat the streets.
No, Allison, one of the things I just wanted, as you went through that first section, Linda, and just for clarification for the public, is this Town Center brochure is a concept plan for what the committee and, we believe, the village board, after discussions, would love to see in the community as well as what the residents would love to see. Now, we have put some types of shops in here, but the end users are going to dictate that. The goal is that it is not, it is designed in such a way that a quick-service restaurant is not going to locate here because the nature of how it would be designed and set up. There's no drive-through capability. It's truly, we're trying to cater to a place to dine, to shop, to eat, to recreate and live. But that being said, there are some concept plans in here. They might not come to fruition, but something will. It just might, you know, this is just like, again, a reminder, it's a vision board piece and something for the village and Michael specifically to present to developers. When they're, what do you mean? What do you want? Here you go. This is really what we're trying to achieve.
Yeah, I mean, another thing that we were thinking about, like, think of music for kids, right? Like someone who's doing, you know, I think like the school throck, right? You could have kids and have some sort of school throck in there. That would be a music experience or, you know, that type of thing, and all sorts of things. We had someone, what was the idea that someone came in and they were telling us? Wasn't it like a painting experience or something different that was happening in a bar?
Oh, yes, yes.
They were telling...
You?
Oh, my gosh, yes, that was such a great, that was such a great idea. So, I mean, like, there's all of these great ideas of just experiences that you can incorporate into this downtown area. And again, so, right, you could do some window shopping, you could go do an experience, and then you could go to a bar, right? And it's right, all right there in the Town Center, and it's so great, right? So it's a, it's a nice little area for you to gather with your friends. It's, you know, family-friendly, et cetera, so.
The other reason to show this to you all and have Linda want to take you through it was to, she did a phenomenal job laying all of the, taking all those vision boards and putting them to paper. But this, what you're seeing today, is really gone through the marketing company. So yes, it's not the village center problem, but there is a tree in here. And as you look through the document, you'll notice, instead of bullet points, there's acorns. I mean, there's, this is meant to be a, you know, this is like the end, with some minor tweaks, but the end product, on whether or not there's a cover on it, should be decided. But this, as you're seeing it here on the screen, it doesn't show up as well in the print. It's kind of the finished product, if you will. So if we can pick up with restaurants, because I know we're all about halfway done, but what's...
Yeah.
So.
What location are you looking at for this? Do you have any ideas?
We have several locations that are considered, but we have one developer at the moment that is interested in potentially doing a product, a project. So news to come, the end of February, I will say.
All right, so a place to dine, creating destination dining through food, ambiance, and customer experience. Next page. So distinctive dining experiences. So one of these is kind of very exciting to me, you know, just the idea of a retro diner. Being able to go and have retro diner to go read a newspaper or take the kids to coffee shops, like a true coffee shop to go and work in, the bistro, bakeries, cake, cupcake boutiques, bar-to-table, family-style diet, or just a destination restaurant. What we're trying to get away from is, again, fast food. Because in my mind, and I think all of our minds when we were doing this, is we want people to come here for an experience, right? No one comes to Sugar Grove to go to McDonald's, right? The truth is, is you can go to McDonald's anywhere and have the same experience, but to come here for a Fifty-Style diner and have that experience? I don't know of a Fifty-Style diner anywhere, right? Or to have like a certain experience, I always use Alice's as an example for me. We'll go at nine o'clock at night just to go to Alice's in El Barrio. It's an experience for us. So we want to be able to create those distinct type of restaurants that people are like, "Hey, I want to go back to that restaurant, and that's the experience I want to have." So that's what we're trying to create here. Next page. And the same thing with bars, right? So there are a bunch of bars that we took a look at the concepts, and we should have really done more road trips for this. But, you know, beer gardens are very popular, urban wineries, there are now dedicated whiskey bars, steakeasies, artisan craft and global drink options. But, you know, a specific bar where people will come and, you know, really have a unique subset of where they go. And so we're looking for something that's a little bit more unique to Sugar Grove that may look like one of these concepts. And again, right there in the confines of the Town Center. And probably one of the most important things that we've heard across the board is that it has to have outdoor dining options, right? People want to be able to sit outdoors. They want to be able to dine just casually outdoors or even formally, right? Be able to enjoy evening outdoors and under the lights and be able to people-watch as they walk by. And so we really like to explore that opportunity to have plenty of outdoor dining opportunities. Here's another creative one. So going mobile. We all know that we have the, what is it, the Mobile Fridays, Food Truck Friday. So Food Truck Friday is an experiment, and it's going very, very well. But so think of this concept, that if we had just an area within the Town Center, and there are always food trucks, right? These food trucks could come in and out, and they could always just be switched. So some days Mexican, some days it's Jamaican, some days it's, you know, pancakes or whatever it is, right? People never know what it is, and it's always changing. There's all of this variety. It makes it exciting. It's, it just creates this great reason for people to keep checking in. And the great thing about food trucks is they're extremely, they use a lot of social media. They get a lot of following. And for people who are maybe not ready to break into the brick-and-mortar business, this is an easy investment. So for someone who maybe wants to start a restaurant, they're not quite sure they're ready to jump in to the complete restaurant business, this is a great way for them to start. So we're providing them that opportunity that if, you know, there's just an area off of the Town Center that we have, you know, three or four food trucks that are always parked out there with maybe bench seating or picnic table settings, it's a great opportunity to have just different variations of restaurants available.
I would just want to add one thought to that, if I could. So the other part of it is, yes, there's not a McDonald's or Burger King, but this is quick service. So the concept being that you're located near a green space, which I know she's going to get into the slide shortly, where hopefully there's outdoor concerts and people just linger in at the park space. Also, part of that will be programming, what happens at that Town Center. We're hoping the developer has a regular programming schedule that draws people in. But this is one thing, so like if there were an ice rink there, that we have an ice rink now going in the center of town, but if that, if there were an ice rink there in the wintertime, you could have a hot chocolate food truck kind of thing for the kids. So it's a way for folks to get something quick, but still participate in whatever activity might be happening in the green space.
So the Town Center, a place to gather and play. So outdoor activities for adult and children. Once again, it's the experience. So the green space. We're thinking of a place where all of the activities that are kind of inter-dispersed throughout Sugar Grove right now are giving them one place for everybody to have all of the activities. So farmer's market, pop-up shops is kind of an interesting opportunity. So there are different places where smaller retail shops, pop-up shops can just pop up here. Maybe it's an Apple Store, maybe it's a Nike Store, just a smaller little store that people could open up. Different parks and recreational programs, if there's performing arts, bike trails, outdoor movies and concerts, and then just public playgrounds. So we would have one green space that would be available for the community to utilize. We're also looking at having a pavilion or an amphitheater. So that would be a permanent structure, that would be a covered stage, live music and visual arts performance venue. We could make it rentable to the community. So let's say that my daughter wants to get married there, right? So I could rent that out. She could get married there. We could have chairs around. She could then do that and, or special occasions. And but it would be very important to blend that into all of the surroundings there so I can see that, you know, with natural landscaping. A retention basin. So we would also like to incorporate a retention basin around in this Town Center. What that would do is provide us an ability for, you know, efficient and cost-effective drainage system, but that also creates natural habitat for wildlife, which is awesome. And then importantly, it creates year-round community recreational purposes. So the next page, which is really fun. We would be able to offer entertainment activities. So we wanted to then start offering swan boat rentals, wheel fun rentals, kayak rentals, and then the ice skating facilities. So once again, creating activities for people within Sugar Grove and surrounding communities to come to Sugar Grove because we have activities that are available within that retention basin. And then just the natural settings for the community enjoyment. We envision natural, there are gated grasses and flowers, butterfly gardens, community gardens, water features, and then just several walkways and bike trails that would connect all around the Town Center. And then our last section here is the place to live. So off of the Town Center, we would also like to look at adding some residential spaces. But we would like these residential spaces to be a little bit different, right? The mixed-use properties that we would envision is that there could be some retail on the bottom. And then on the top of the retail space, we could have some residential spaces. So it could be lofts or apartments or studios. It could give people, you know, the chance to live, work, shop, and play all in the same place. And people are really gravitating towards that because it's very close to amenities, you know, and it's not just really one generation that's looking at it. It's kind of multi-generational. That our location is, you know, it's close to everything in the walkability features. This is a great concept. This is called the Pocket Neighborhood. So it is a group of clustered neighborhoods that are really smaller homes that are then featured around in green space itself. So you have smaller homes, very close neighborhoods, and you have like a shared garden courtyard or street. And basically what that does is that that encourages a community feel within your small cluster of neighborhoods. And a lot of communities are starting to do this, not such big, grand... Not such big grand homes, smaller homes, shared green spaces. And then we could be looking more at residential properties, such as smaller single-family homes, maybe multifamily homes, the duplex or the triplex. Is that what that's called, the triplex? More ranch style homes or bungalow and cottage style homes. So smaller footprint homes. And at the end of the brochure is just how to contact Michael. And he gives a map of where we're located and just a little bit of a close. And that's the end of the brochure.
Not really. What, what did we, what did we say this town's, regardless of separating out the residential Walter, Walter, but the actual town center? What did we put as an acreage, that six acres?
Yeah, six to eight acres.
Six to eight acres, just for that, that spot. And then anything that residential growth around it to help with its vitality. So this is what it looks like. This hopefully looked through it and I have a copy. You guys can get a printed copy. We'll email you all a copy. So you can look at it, see if there's any changes that hasn't been printed. Please give your advice, but.
I've got my last piece here.
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad.
Okay.
There's more.
So using the brochure, so Michael is going to be using it with prospective developers. This is also going to be available on the Village website for residents. We're going to make that available. We will be creating a one-page overview that we will be providing to the Village residents, to Sugar Grove residents. And we're thinking about putting that one-page overview in the Water Bill. So we think is that we want everybody to kind of see what these plans are. So we're going to stick a one-page overview in the Water Bill that will drive them to go look at the bigger plan out on the website. And then what we'd also, are planning on doing is creating like a frequently an FAQ out on the website. So people may have questions. So we're trying to think about what kind of questions will our residents have. We're trying to be proactive about that so that they can go there and hopefully we'll try and answer many of those questions. But really, we're just trying to drive, drive traffic to the Village website. So the next few meetings that we're having with the town center committee will be really focused on rolling out proactive marketing and a communication plan just really focused on getting our resident feedback. So, and all of our meetings are open. So anybody can, anybody can join and anybody can attend. So as you're talking to people about them, encourage them to come. You know, the more people we can get to come and provide a feedback, we always appreciate that. That is my end.
Thank you very much for your time. And Sean, do you have anything to add to this lovely?
Sometimes when you add stuff to our meetings, you get called out in a presentation.
We don't steal your ideas.
In a very positive way. Very positive way. That was a great presentation. You did a fantastic job presenting that and putting it together.
Yeah. So hopefully everybody wants to, you know, share this with family and friends for a place to live and dine and recreate. I will say one thing about it too. I know everyone has this question. Town center, shouldn't it be located in the center of town? And while yes, that is where everybody would love to have it, the town center concept, regardless of where you put it, it will be a place that wherever you live, some people will be able to get to it relatively easily and some will have to drive. If we put this in the center of town, I would drive to it. If we put it on the south side of town, I would drive to it. If we put on the north side of town, I might be able to bike to it. And vice versa, based on where you live. The idea and the concept behind it is you drive to it, if that's how you get there, and then you're there. And as you went through this presentation, Linda, the biggest thing that I always take away from a town center, wherever it may be, because they exist all over the country, it is also a place that creates a feeling. And so I don't get a feeling when I go to Jewel. I go to Jewel and I do my shopping. But this is the kind of place where you want to spend some time. And you don't have to do much there, but be sometimes. And it's, you know, there's other times that you need to do shopping or you're dining or eating, or there's a movie in the park that might. But it is something that this community lacks that I know we all desperately want. And so I just want everyone to keep in mind that wherever it's located, wherever it goes, it's still a place for all. And there are other opportunities within this village for other development. We do not have a traditional downtown, nor will we ever. So what Sugar Grove will have will likely be pockets like this that have some commercial spot on them and residential around. And so we'll create that near our neighborhood so that every neighborhood has something that I will be different than what's near my home, that I can go to and be. So that's the goal as we go through this. I think trying to replicate something from somewhere else or try to create this big downtown that we will never be able to create as we have a state road that runs through our town. What is our next best option? And when something is presented and a developer is willing to do it, jump on that bandwagon and you go from there and wait for the next opportunity to come along too. So hopefully you all like this. And we, I'm hopeful in the next couple of months to see some real action moving forward with our town center concept, so.
I have one question. Parking, what does the parking look like in this town center? Is there a big parking lot?
There will be parking there. There would be parking, there would have to be parking near it. That seaside photo that you saw in the original brochure, that was designed, you can see there's cars parked in there. I believe our town center would likely have some parking along that route. Today, post-COVID, they don't allow any cars in there. So it is a, it's a giant pavement street. And kids are on these one-wheels, riding around on bicycles. There's concerts. It's, it's great. It has created a parking kind of disaster for this area. But our, our parking will be taken into account by the developer when they, when they do this. But it's not going to be so far that you have to take a shuttle bus over to the town center. It'll be in close proximity.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking, you know, elderly, if they're walking the pains or they're in a wheelchair or walker, how far are they going?
No, there will be, there will likely be parking all through the town center and handicap parking. And it'll be accessible. But I'm not the developer. We're just, you know, those things will be considered as they move forward. Okay? Yes, Michael?
So I came into this process, so, you know, sort of halfway through it. And I really think this is a great product. We work it. I'd really thank Linda. She put in so many hours on this. Porced through literally thousands of photos applying the ones for this brochure. And the last time we met to go over the brochure, she has an intensity about this project. You think we were paying her. And then we're paying her a lot. And we're paying her zip. She really made this a labor of love, actually. So thank you from ahead. Great job.
Thank you, Michael, for saying that. It's true. Linda's a passionate person and she did a great job. And quite honestly, she, she drove, or Carol Stream to meet with a marketing company because it wasn't getting done. Lost the translation. And so she had to drive there and really nail this down in order to get it done. So she put in a plenty of hours of time. We appreciate your efforts and you'll see it. I'll buy you your first cocktail when you're in the Village house. All right, moving on. Thank you.
When the food truck bars start.
We're rolling them down.
I, a quick comment.
Yeah, please.
There, you know, I was sitting here through some, like, when you were talking, it was making me think about a lot of the other areas where I've been in the Chicago area that might have two or three elements of it. Like there's the Fur Ridge Village Center. And I know that one because that's near where I work. That incorporates the residential with the retail really, really well. But not so much the green space. And then you have Wheaton Town Square, which was built when I was growing up over there, which is handles, you know, the foot traffic. It's much more of an outdoor, but it's meant for smaller shops and that sort of stuff. I think if we can capture four out of five of those elements, maybe head and shoulders, you know, above, you know, anywhere else. And then maybe some other developer might say and recognize where that idea is working so well and they're pulling the remaining elements. So this is something else that they may bring in. This certainly, in my humble opinion, travel a lot. This seems to be kind of a model that a lot of development is going globally. A lot of the stuff that's happening in Europe, I was spending a lot of time there, very similar to that. These small centers in different sections that are just like you mentioned, President Cohen, you know, that may have slightly different characteristics from one to the other. This, it's a quick and easy way, it seems to be, with what's going on in the development in areas of Texas. When I spent, I spent some time there about a year or so ago. So we're not necessarily reinventing the wheel here. It's reinventing for us. And I really enjoy making sure and the comments that you were making regarding still capturing the elements that everyone likes about being Sugar Grove and maintaining those. Because I, I think if it's, if it's done well, there's a chance to really knock out the park here. I really do.
Thank you for the comments. Anyone else want to make any comments on it before we move on? Hearing none. We will move on on item seven, airport reports. We did not have one this evening. Public comment on items scheduled for action. Under consent agenda this evening, A, we have approval of the minutes of the December 20th, 2022 Village Four meeting. B, approval of the vouchers. C, approval of the treasurer's report. Under general business, we have A, a resolution authorizing a professional services agreement for water system needs with Lane Christensen Company, Inc. B, a resolution, well number six abandonment. C, a resolution, annual preventative maintenance, well testing all wells. D, a resolution approving a contingency fee agreement for legal services for personal litigation against certain manufacturers of PFAS. E, approval of mid-year budget update. Are there any public comments on any of those items scheduled for action?
Just a quick question.
Are they on the, are they on the items scheduled for action?
Any action, huh?
Yes, sir. Three minutes.
Huh?
So sure, you have three minutes.
It's not a.
It's public comment. It's not inter, inter-armed.
Oh, no question.
You can ask a question. We might answer it later, but this is for public comment.
All right, that's, nevermind.
Sorry, Carrie.
Oh, that's okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, rather? You shut us up. I mean, they're comments. Any comments, follow comments? Okay. Hearing none, under consent agenda, any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve consent as previously stated?
As stated.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
I have first on trustee Shomus and a second on a trustee Lundy. Roll call, please. Trustee Shomus?
Aye.
Trustee Lundy?
Aye.
Trustee Walter?
Aye.
Trustee Bonnie?
Aye.
Trustee Haron?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Under general business, we have a resolution for authorizing professional services agreement for water system needs. Tony?
I'll defer to Brad, please.
Okay, on all of them?
Yes.
Okay, Brad?
Somebody you may remember, recall, five years ago, we went into this professional service agreement with Lane Wester for, there's numerous benefits to this, but one is it's a five percent reduction in labor costs, 10 percent reduction in special service fees and extended warranties on some of the equipment. And most importantly, emergency response priority. So if we have an emergency, they'll respond to us. Thanks. So it's just a formality. There's no cost to us. It's basically a renewal of existing five-year PSA.
Okay. Other questions?
Lane Christensen.
Yeah, Lane Christensen. One is Lane. If you change the author name, it's still our local.
Or.
Right, Wheaton, right?
I'm not sure. Or.
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 Any questions for Brad?
How much should their rates go up from? Just out of curiosity.
I did not look into the rates. They're fully in the shops or whatever.
Yeah, I, I was just curious. You said it was a five-year. We're just extending another five years from what we had done before. Figured it was worth it. They always do.
Yeah.
I mean, just looking antotally at the line card, it, it seems generally in line with what we've been getting at a similar level of work.
So. It says that they have it when I'm concerned with fact of 2016, so.
Oh. And it'd be subject to individual work orders. So you could always. Correct. You could always look at what the rate is.
Okay. Other comments or questions for Brad? Can I get a motion to approve, A, the resolution as previously stated?
As stated.
Second.
I have first on trustee Shomus and a second on a trustee Haron. Roll call, please, Allison. Trustee Shomus?
Aye.
Trustee Haron?
Aye.
Trustee Bonnie?
Aye.
Trustee Lundy? Trustee Walter?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Okay. We have up next, Brad, the well number six of the end of man.
So well number six, for all you may have noticed, the point of the original press very well is it sits adjacent to the west roots of Colton Beach Clubhouse. That particular well hasn't been used since the early 2000s. The water is all tied in iron and it is a variable producing like around 200 million gallons. So it wasn't cost effective to put iron in the well. So that's when we went into the deep well that I was just talking about. So we've kept that well for backup for numerous reasons, but recently we completed a bunch of water handling projects trying to press the area to town together. So the EPA has basically cracked down this PSMG as well for over 10 years' time. So they pulled our reduced monitoring sampling program right because we have a new law and it is susceptible to contamination. I believe it's an appropriate request. I think she will proceed with this.
Thank you. Any questions for Brad? Thank you. Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution as previously stated?
Aye.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
I have first on trustee Bonnie, the second on trustee Haron. Roll call, please, Allison. Trustee Bonnie?
Aye.
Trustee Haron?
Aye.
Trustee Walter?
Aye.
Trustee Lundy?
Aye.
Trustee, uh, Shox?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, I just had a question from previously though regarding the line card. The line card in their standard master services agreement dated 2016 is showing about, I mean, it's seven percent.
Like six, six point two.
I did that on that. Okay. All right, you guys were.
The order that's in the second resolution for abandonment has October 1st, 2016, which is about six percent higher than 2016.
Um, I, I think it would just be move us to make sure we get the latest line card in their, in their NSA. All right. Sorry.
No, thank you. Up next, a resolution for the annual preventative maintenance well testing. Brad?
This is something that we do every year with Lane. Just helps people to die out what our wells are doing and when they're ready for service. So they basically go around and test each well within the system, you know, full monitoring, draw down specific capacity. It's just a good measure. Gives us an idea of how we can program payments in future.
And this is on all wells?
Yes, all wells.
Any questions?
We do the same with Lane and the budget.
The end of budget. Any questions for Brad? This is some cleaning up normal business to tend to right here, so.
Those rates went up again.
Yeah, they did. It's about 10, 6 percent from 2016. Yeah, it's about 2 percent. So about 2 percent again.
Okay. Yeah, listen.
They're all different, however, because we should not make sense of it.
Okay.
We'll make sure that those are paid before.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve our item C, the resolution for the annual preventative maintenance well testing?
As stated.
Thank you.
As stated.
Thank you. Trustee Shomus with a second on trustee. Thank you. First on trustee Shomus and a second on trustee Walter. Roll call, please, Allison. Trustee Shomus?
Aye.
Trustee Walter?
Aye.
Trustee Lundy?
Aye.
Trustee Haron?
Aye.
Trustee Bonnie?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Up next, item D, resolution approving a contingency fee agreement for legal services for pursuant litigation against certain manufacturers of PFAS. Uh, Brian?
I asked you, did you see that?
It's just a resolution that we discussed in the close session about PFAS.
Okay.
On the, by side, John Lawson.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
How much would we need to summarize regarding the reporting, what we can and can't report?
Uh, well, I think we would just indicate what the, what the basis of the agreement is, who we would be engaging, uh, and, uh, just to make a record of what the resolution is about. It's a contingency fee agreement with a, a group of law firms who are specializing in considering uh, the, the remedies against manufacturers of polyalkyl, uh, polyfluoralkyl substances, uh, which we have identified as being in our shallow wells. Uh, this would require significant expenditures to address that in the event that we ever needed to use these wells, which are held in reserve. Uh, and this would be a contingency fee agreement, and we would be joining 20 other Illinois communities uh, in seeking the expertise of these law firms and the experts that they have retained in order to pursue remedies against manufacturers.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. Can I get a, a motion to approve item D, the resolution as previously stated?
As noted.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
I got it from trustee here and a second on a trustee Bonnie. Roll call, please, Allison. Trustee Haron?
Aye.
Trustee Bonnie?
Aye.
Trustee Lundy?
Aye.
Trustee Walter?
Aye.
Trustee Shox?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Um, up next, item E, approval of the mid-year budget update. Matt?
Um, so this was discussed at the 12, 6, um, meeting for the whole six-month year update. And then the board wanted to re-discuss it again to discuss the practice of unvaccinated surplus. And obviously since other things that have changed and numbers that have happened. So after December 6 meeting, uh, the board did consent as we approved, and that approved at the 20th meeting for additional sidewalk, uh, with various new path litigation. So that is included in this number and the new anticipated surplus is the 272,000. Um, so we brought back the recommendations of staff and then from that discussion on December 6 as well. I actually believe that could be used. Um, so the first one is that additional sidewalk, but that was already approved. Um, there are going to be IT and service, IT services of hardware needs. Right now that number is unknown. We threw in a number of 70,000 in. Um, we're right now in a state of being unaware of what we're going into. Our new IT consultants are currently working on getting that number for us, but right now it's unknown at this time. Um, we, we do know some, there's some stories and things that we're going to need to be addressing. Uh, but we're working through that right now. It's just kind of a set number that we're not really sure yet. We will be bringing that back to the board as we know more information. Multi-factor, that is kind of not going to be a point anymore for us because we're going to let our IT consultants down on that as well. So that, that was not too much of an issue for us. We do have the BSA cloud upgrade that was presented that's 78,000. Right now it'll be 12,500 in this current fiscal year. And then the remainder will be not until 24, 25. We are about 18 months out at least on the implementation with them. Um, so right now the recommendation is to transfer the money over, but if that's not the board's want and we just did the 12, 5, that's okay too. Uh, and then we just kind of budget for that in the future. Or we'll get it again in September when we get the final audit. Uh, the discussion through the board was additional on the Parkway tree program. Um, then there was discussion from chief on just police department architectural services for this building to retrofit it to what police department will be in the future. Right now we don't have a cost from any company yet. Uh, chief was working with two, two different companies right now and doing a rock course to try to get a cost for that. Um, again, that's, that's something we can look at in the surplus, but we also take out the funds that we have put away in our arena. We can use that as well if it doesn't come out of the surplus.
For the police department?
For the police department.
Access control?
Uh, for the police department architectural.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, the police department adds an additional access control security group. That is something that will be for this building to do all that switch over from village, from administration to finding the vacating to being able to get the police department involved. Um, and then the rest will be just the chamber of the building board wanting to utilize for future police department upgrades or littoral uses. Um, we can kind of discuss the general fund. As of all right now, that's what that, um, first section is about with the 272,000.
Is invoice under the water fund though, that invoice for the cloud, 14,000, is it the same? If you're just taking part of it?
No, it's called invoice cloud. That's, that's software that we had discussed last meeting in my staff report.
Yeah.
Uh, for utility services.
Okay.
An option. So that's, that's separate. It's just oddly called invoice cloud.
Okay, okay. All right. So under, under the general fund, um, uh, obviously it's unknown at this moment. He's, he's earmarked $70,000, but we have no idea for the cost. Those costs unfortunately are going to be whatever, whatever deficiencies we have, we're going to have to take care of. So, I mean, that's going to reduce us down to what, 200 now?
Right.
With that number. So that takes us down to two, will be 202, if you do that. The multi-factor authorization, it's $5,000. It's.
That one's not as much of an issue. We're going to let our IT consultants come in and kind of dictate that. So that one, I wouldn't worry about right now.
So it'll have to hear our anything about. Okay. Uh, the cloud storage upgrade. So after discussion, further discussion with Matt, we could commit the 12, 5 with the surplus dollars and, um, we could commit the whole thing. But we could commit the 12, 5, the 65, 9, 20. Is it my understanding that that's in one fiscal year or is it split over two?
It would be one because it's training and implementation, but we claim that to be in one year.
Okay.
Uh, but I would think those are 50/50 split. So really the general fund what you're liquidating is 60, or it's not 12, 5, it's 67/50.
Okay.
Out of the general fund.
Okay. And then is there money in the water?
Yeah.
Okay. So, okay, so that's even better. And then I assume you're splitting 50/50 and 65?
Correct. That's the 30, each one would be 39, 210.
So the point being, or the reason I say all this is I, my belief is we can absorb the 32 in the general fund in the future budget and have that budget for it. We can always change our mind by September when we do a final audit.
Right.
So what I would suggest today is for him, he needs to, he needs commitment to get in line for 18 months from now. So if the village board is fine with authorizing the 12, 5, and they'll split it between departments, and then let him budget the 69, split between two budgets. We'll see how that budget pans out here in the next couple, couple of months. If it's not working out and he needs surplus dollars, we can always take surplus dollars there and back. So that's my recommendation.
I, I would agree with that.
Okay. All right. So you have.
Matt, if you're going to need help talking with the IT consultants as far as opening some of those projects that were left, let me know what sort of assistance I can be on that. It might need a day or two or three heads up to work stuff around my work schedule for me or conference call. But I'd be more than happy to sit in on some.
They, they give them about two to three weeks to kind of get in here.
Sure.
What they're needing. And then we've also, uh, got everything from department level on what is outstanding or needs to be worked on.
Sometimes those companies like to come back and use lots of big words and TLAs, three-letter acronyms to make themselves sound like they're coming to save the day doing a bunch of stuff. And it might sound like a lot of smoke and mirrors. Um, I can help cut through some of the fog and some of that stuff. I've dealt with countless organizations in that area in my career. It's, it's in my real house. So.
Thank you for offering your services. That's great. For you to utilize, um, in-house expertise if we have it. Um, okay, so.
The BSA will come back for ratification.
Okay.
It's just to get that proposal in so we get in line as fast possible. It'll be back in the next meeting for ratification.
And do you, are you going to have a formal, um, like we did for the sidewalks? Are you going to have a formal approval of the IT services? Cause that's an earmark. Are you going to wait?
No, we're going to wait. We'll bring it back as a separate item once we figure out what it is.
What it is.
We'll bring it back as one total.
Okay.
Item.
My guts tell me you're going to be looking at a list of projects. It's going to be a wish list. That'll probably be twice that number. And then we're going to have to prioritize what gets done year one, year two, year three, year four.
So what that number is, is current immediately, not.
Okay.
Future. This is just to make sure that we're good now.
Okay.
Not the future. So that'll be something we, that's going to come in phases. This is to make sure we're good going forward right now.
Fair.
Of things are finding that are immediate concern. Yeah.
That's what a good organization would do.
Okay, so, uh, the cloud upgrade, we're through. The Parkway tree program, um, my recommendation at the moment would be to just continue what we do with the 50/50 tree program. It's not, it's not earmarking anything at, at this time. We have some unprecedented expenses that we have to kind of go through in those trees and good, but I think we just let that ride for a minute.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. I know that's been some, I haven't been performed it, but I think given the scale, that's something that was for.
Right, exactly, exactly. Okay. We'll get there. We don't disagree with you. Uh, and we will still offer for Arbor Day, uh, we will do the same thing we did last year, which is a resident can put in for a Parkway tree and they'll get, the winner will get a free Parkway tree and that will be the, the tree that we planted that year. Um, architectural services for the police department. Chief, how long do you think the board that you get any numbers of that?
Uh, try to schedule something and, uh, trustee Bonnie, trustee Lundy, and first week of February or shortly thereafter to meet with them.
Okay.
And then based on that, I'm sure we'll be able to, first doing another, one, something to another possible one party.
Okay.
Just to see what they're getting into and then they'll come back with their possible holders just for their services, not to, to do a candle or anything else. Just, you know, what's going to cost for a function or just.
Is it a third company or are we still?
Just position.
The two, okay, okay. All right. Um, access control, I mean, that's immediate. He has to secure this building. So, uh, it is what it is. If that's the number, I think that that's the high end, right? We do not expect it to go.
Yeah, I think that's a, for basically.
Okay.
For immediate need.
Okay.
Once we figure that out, that'll come back.
That'll come back.
All of this will come back.
Everything will come back.
To ratify evidence.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, and then obviously if there's anything to be, to be transferred, we'll likely do that at the audit time anyway.
Yeah, which is, yeah, again, that's, you'll get new numbers in September once you have those better and determine if any.
Okay. Okay. So I know it's here under general business. Are you looking for an actual approval of the other?
No, it was just kind of a consensus approval on the items and then, and then you get a consensus approval back. And future meetings just to rat out the whole cost. Cause a lot of these are, like I said, estimate the only approval is BSA right now.
Right.
For the general fund. So access control is up and coming back. Um, and then once architectural services, we get anything, that'll come back.
Okay. Okay. So there's no motion needed on that?
No, no action. And then the last one is the water fund stuff.
Oh, right. Sorry. Yeah.
There's just one under there after the fall overview. It's about 237,000 dollars surplus. Um, after that discussion at the last meeting regarding that invoice cloud, we did get a proposal and the increase of what we currently pay is going to be about 14,000 dollars to do this upgrade. Um, we do believe that it's 14,000 dollars. It's, it's a hard way to quantify the tightened efficiency savings that we're going to have. As far as a dollar, not to say that we're going to save this, but, um, based on the usages and the capabilities of this service, we do believe it's beneficial um, to do this for the village. Um.
Will it be an auto, like, so I know that there's some utility companies that you can do? Like I have my credit card saved so I can get points, but I have to actually tell it to use my saved credit card? Will this be an automatic and you can just do it, fill it on your credit card?
Yeah. So one of the main functionalities, as soon as you pay your first bill, the next screen's going to have checkboxes. And basically the checkbox can be auto enroll in paperless, auto enroll in auto payment, and it would be saving the payment you just used. So that it will auto pay off the payment you just put in. Uh, and then you can sign up for paperless. You can, and yeah, it's, again, during development, it's all very similar to like Amazon, where it's got all those functionalities. When you pay a payment, it'll save your information, but it also allows a lot more access functionality after you make a payment to enroll in the paperless, put it in your wallet and record your save. And it's got a lot of history data to what you're doing.
Okay.
So just FYI on the ROI on that, just running some basic numbers. You were talking about saving internal employees a lot of time. That 14,000 dollars that depending on how you handle our overhead, all the, all that sort of good stuff, probably talking about five weeks to some of these times. So there's someone that we have that's doing this full-time, um, that they don't have to do it anymore. And they will do something else that we need further to do is add this. It's a quick ROI on something.
Yeah, but we have, we have one part-time person giving each other. Just having the ability to create more time for other person to utilize more time.
I think that's a good point here.
Okay. All right. Sounds like that's a go-to.
Uh, thank you.
You're welcome. And then out of curiosity, so in the water fund, just as a surplus, it just sits in there. It's not like we keep it over at a certain dollar amount and then we move it on to, we move it out to capital?
Yeah. So actually during the meeting in September, we'll use review of the general fund.
Yeah.
This year there will be a water fund part of that resolution as well.
Okay.
Uh, and then we'll go back into the CIG plan. That's going to be presented in February. It kind of relates all those funds and where they're going.
Okay.
Yeah, we, in the past few years, we've been building back up the fund balance because we utilize it for the large, the cross area to.
Right, the water.
Yeah, suburbs, rich watering. That we utilize the actual fund balance for. So we built it back up and now we'll be doing the same thing we did in the general fund.
Okay.
For water. We'll just be presenting in September.
Okay, perfect. All right. And that is done. Any other questions for staff on any of that? No? Hearing none. Any public comments on anything? Please.
Yeah.
Harry, you have the floor and you have three minutes.
Okay, we're talking about TIPS tonight. Uh, fashion now for the TIP is that only the city has reportedly the authority support redevelopment more broadly, economic development with a TIP. Um, private project, assuming it's approved, private project review considerations are that uh, private projects are driven by sector developers or business owners providing public TIP funds should be considered an extraordinary intervention and largely privately driven real estate market. Accordingly, such interventions are worthy of good deal of scrutiny. Uh, and any agreement to financially support a private, uh, project must be structured carefully to provide the city with reasonable protections and assurances. Um, one of the topics within this is the public benefit, that the analysis is crucial because an inability, inability to give private financing does not necessarily mean project warrants to funding. The core question here is what is the benefit that a city is receiving that warrants an extraordinary intervention? Public benefits can include bringing a contaminated site back into productive use, employment growth, and tax base growth, base growth, among others. Um, just looking at it historically to make a point, um, with the old economic impact proposal, the, the proposal that the city received, and I don't think any of the public saw this until after the, the agreement to separate by crown was, was entered into. But their, their development was talking about, at that time it's not the same, I understand, uh, development of 700 or 7.9 million square feet of modern industrial building. Annual construction would likely. Annual construction would likely take, uh, nine years to complete this, all right? I know we're not talking about the same program, but, um, a building is a building. There, there's consideration for data centers to return large buildings. There's considerations for some warehouse inbound, so on and so forth. Just make that assumption. The jobs they projected were three hundred and thirty-four jobs. I do not believe those jobs would be coming from people within Sugar Grove. I don't even know if they would be coming from within Kane County. So I don't see, as one example, I don't see any direct benefits to the community or village growth from the construction aspect of this. Um, there are other impacts that they suggest, ongoing jobs through build-out and so on and so forth. I can't get into that. I only have three minutes. The point I'm trying to make is I'm hoping we will see factual information and approach of what the benefits the city are going to be going forward along with the project plan before this is voted on. So we can really determine what the true benefits are, not just the concept.
You got it, Harry.
I'm assuming my three minutes are up.
Your three minutes are up, but that's okay. You have.
Sorry that was disjointed, but.
No, 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 I get it.
Don't have a lot of time with the three minutes off.
I know. And, and I, I can tell you that, um, we, and I've said it before, we have engaged with Crown. It's been about a, a year and a half of, of time spent to bring them to a place of a changed plan. And the day is, it's coming in short order where they will be presenting, um, a new plan, land plan. And it'll take a while to get through the process. This is not, and I tried to stress that before. This is not something where the signs will go on the ground and panic will ensue. That is not what's going to happen. But we have to start somewhere and it starts in conversations and it starts with how, how, are they willing, you know, to give some? Are we willing to give some on land use? Can we come to a common place? I believe we've gotten there and, um, the community will be engaged soon, is what I can tell you. But nothing will be sprung.
Okay, well, again, I'm kind of looking back at the old.
I get it.
My memory went through number one. And number two is, is, uh, I don't know what the restrictions are going to be with, with the community conversations and so on. I know if I look at the calendar, I've got seventy-two minutes to speak before this body between now and the end of the year. That's my limitation. I'm just trying to bring up some points that are on record for people here. There's, there's, you know, you get into these projects, it's, this is a huge project. It's going to change the face of Sugar Grove and there's a lot within the TIP that can be very problematic.
I don't know that the project would change the face of Sugar Grove. I think.
Well, it's my opinion.
Well, you don't even know what the project is.
Well, I'm, well, if I, I was at the zoning meeting and they're talking about redefining the language for data centers, which I understand is going to push also for some industrial. I believe that's part of it. There's commercial possibly. Okay, that, that's all still somewhat similar and, and the TIP is still the same concept of how the money flows in, how the money flows out, what's really there. And so I'm just trying to be able to understand all that.
We want you to understand every part of it and if at this rate, you have more than seventy-two minutes.
Ah, well.
I, I adhere to my limits.
Harry, Harry, I know you can reach out to each one of us as a board member at any time. So your seventy-two minutes of talking here might only be seventy, but you have unlimited access to all the trustees and mete president at any time. So make sure you reach out and ask and I encourage everybody in the community to, if there's questions, ask. Don't believe in hype, don't, don't feel intimidated. So ask questions and I can guarantee you, I've only been on board a short period of time, but I can tell you this, that every one of us, uh, transparency is the utmost importance to us. We're not, uh, nothing's getting pulled over anyone's eyes and we will make sure that everybody is well-informed of everything.
Yep.
About everything, not just about this project, about anything in the budget. And we want that. So at any time, send one of us an email and if you're not hearing back, you send another one an email.
Okay, sure. No, I appreciate it and I, I believe that, and I believe all of it. I think everybody's looking at the best news, but, you know, I guess I'm compelled to come up and speak my mind here. Hopefully it'll, some people.
Bring some friends.
Might not, might not know. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Harry. Okay, discussion items, we have, uh, any other public comments? I'm sorry. Any other public, all right, we will close this section. No discussion under reports, staff reports, uh, Michael.
Uh, two things. Uh, so the International Council of Shopping Centers, they're major national shows in May with all the restaurants and retailers, uh, either in attendance or they're real estate people or they have individuals. And, uh, the show is post-COVID, not getting, we're getting large attendance. It was a twenty-one, they moved it down. So.
Our last people in the town, would this be a show in one area?
It's not. It's in Clark County, Nevada. In, in, in a previous life, the village president tried to get me to admit publicly that I'm going to Las Vegas. And so, uh, I'm not going forward, I always say it's in Clark County. Uh, I don't pick the venue. Uh, but what we're, what we're going to do is starting in February, they start releasing on their website the list of the attendees and the exhibitors. You can break it down by company name and by contact. So we're going to start working on our target list. Uh, and then I will be sharing that list with the, um, landlords in town that have space available. And if they have someone out there at the show, we're going to make the calls together. And or I can say to them, tell me which ones you think might be the best fit for your center. And, uh, try to maximize the available time. The second thing I wanted to mention is that, uh, we've begun the planning for the State of the Village address, State of the Village breakfast, which is February, everyone marks their calendars, February twenty-eighth at eight AM. Probably go to about ten. So Womazi Community College in their professional center. Uh, we are planning an aggressive marketing campaign. The Sugar Grove E and C is, is the organizing group for this. Uh, we're doing a save the date, uh, by the end of this week. Uh, and it's, I think, you'll all get a copy of this. It's a, they had a nice, uh, piece that folks have developed. And, uh, Womazi is going to serve as our major sponsor. They are providing all the facilities and all the equipment, uh, exchange for a sponsorship. And we're expecting to have four or five paid sponsors, um, for the event as well. Uh, registration will open, we're guessing, about January twentieth. Uh, and, um, hoping to have a great, a great turnout, uh, in these market calendars. And, um, the event of course will feature President Cohen, State of the Village address. We're also hoping to have a few remarks made by the new president of Womazi Community College. He doesn't start until January thirtieth, but we're going to try to reach out to him in advance. It'd be a great way for him to meet the community. Um, so I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Michael? Okay, very good. Walter?
Um, I don't have anything there, so. With the holidays and short weeks.
Yeah, okay. Um, just as a note, uh, I was lucky enough to go to Burg Barrel this afternoon and remember I went? It was today. The day has been a blur, but, um, they are coming along and the outside, what, am I going undercover?
No, no.
The, the outside of the building is, it's positive community development. It's, um, it's really coming along. So they were asking about permits, so I'm sure Brad has already dealt with that, but, um, it looks great. I'm very excited to see, it's big, by the way. And I don't know what the capacity is. Do you know off the top of your head?
No.
Oh, it's, it's thick. And it is beautiful. You guys are really going to love it. It's going to be a nice hotspot for Sugar Grove, so I wanted to throw that into community development.
I spoke to Mr. Rados and he's expecting a March grand opening.
That's what he said.
So we, we've offered to help him with that and, uh, should be a great day.
Yeah.
But Andy won't open it?
No, they don't have a date yet. Jim's off to Mexico for tomorrow week, so when he gets back, he wants to meet and start that process of selecting a date and, uh, planning for it.
If they can get that thing open in the next two months after what I saw today, that would be impressive. But there's still a lot of work to be done.
He has put a substantial investment into that building.
Yes.
So if you, if anybody remembers the size of it, and then basically he enclosed the drive-thru as part of the building. Yeah, so it's.
And they're working on a huge Masonry fireplace in the back there where the enclosure was. I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty nice. Old timey.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. We'll go there and burn it after.
It's going to be your go-to.
Yeah, it'll be the go-to. It's great.
It's a struggle. I mean, I hope there are a couple of times, it's a struggle a lot to like, one, going and peeping in the windows. The next off, people market. No, no.
Any questions for Walter? All right, very good. Tell me.
Great.
I was going to say you have two more meetings to give a staff report.
Why?
Well, today.
Oh.
And you're relinquishing.
He's going to work this way into it. Nothing additional to add.
To Brad.
The class opened in the village hall today.
Yes.
Working with IT to finalize the plan, do everybody, hopefully as soon as the project.
Excellent. I'll be your neighbor.
Just in case anybody forgot, January thirty-first, I'm retiring as public works director. Next meeting, uh, seventeenth at five PM, would you like to have coffee for me? Be careful.
People are like, coffee. Well, we're going to have no report, right?
All right, there will be, there will be cakes served at five o'clock, uh, next to board meetings.
Which is next Tuesday because this is off schedule.
Yeah, we're off schedule. That meeting's not, this one is. All right, we'll make that happen. Uh, any questions for public works? Are there individual? No?
I only have three inches of swim so far.
Yeah? And wow, I always usually ask this.
Very much, I believe, or.
It's not bad, it's not bad. All right, Matt, you are up next.
I don't think I have anything to add.
No updates in addition to the board report. And anybody have any questions for him? I think we kind of just went through a lot of their items too and, uh, update. All right, you're not cheating.
He did go live, uh, for at least December with everyone learning, talking a little about him. So, no, no, um, issues that are probably from, uh, capture screen video or, you know, speaking to using the back of the system, starting that, uh, production as well as for getting that evidence over court. So it stays in twenty-two percent of our systems.
Okay.
That's a little bit slower than just turning the cameras on, so overall work is well.
Because eventually that's the goal, right, through that software, is that it's, it's redacting itself.
Yeah, minimal, minimal, uh, interaction with it. So someone still needs to watch it, guide it through and, uh, but it doesn't make it as long as, you know, those other software programs could.
That's great, great news. And then I saw that obviously you're working on getting finalized and getting funded there.
Yeah, it's also been.
Excellent. All right, any questions for Chief?
Okay.
Did the, the size didn't go up yet, did they, on smell?
No, no, waiting for them. Their special orders are holding. And we'll probably come back and kind of award, uh, the, February for, uh, Jamie or many of yours to a record.
Okay.
Ted signs up to a record.
Okay. I look forward to that. Um. Allison.
So I'm just going to highlight a couple of things in the report with just the election. Um, we did have five petitions that were determined, um, and then the lottery was held to determine ballot position. Um, so that will be certified next week. Uh, and then with their license renewals, we are, um, starting, have them sent out by the end of the week uh, just to give a lot of time because of the changes that were made to the ordinance. Um, we updated the application and we're sending out the entirety of the ordinance, uh, along with a little letter of injunction to it and, you know, our shift was a free time to help them.
I think, I know it was a big redo of ordinance. I don't think a lot changed specifically for them. You know, the hours and the classification changed, but it's still, you know, the operations didn't change still. But we're going to help them over the next two months get the certification process for the rules.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, any questions for Allison? Okay, um, trustee reports, trustee Bonnie.
I have nothing to add.
Thank you. Trustee Aaron?
Yeah.
Okay. Trustee Lundy?
Uh, anybody, uh, Girl Scout cookie done? Yay! I'm a Girl Scout supporter. So, um, yeah, uh, they start, stop selling the individual cards, I believe, the beginning of January. Uh, but they'll start to use that, that's what I've drawn after, uh, next year.
Excellent, waiting for mine. Support your local troops, everyone. Yeah. They'll be out.
Don't forget the brownies.
And the brownies.
Well, yeah, I can, Girl Scout, great, the brownies, the whole thing, so.
We've reached.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Yes, yes. That's awesome. Uh, anything else?
No.
Trustee Walter?
Uh, nothing.
Okay. Trustee Shomess?
All my meetings are a lot of sequence with the holidays, other than the park district meeting was supposed to.
Tonight's meeting. I didn't miss that. Yeah, it could be a two-pris. No.
I know, this world, I need to move. Um, president's report, I, I hope everybody had a great holiday. There wasn't, it was kind of a tough two weeks of not catching folks and I was out of town. So I'm glad to be back and very busy. This day was, uh, just one of many, I'm sure. That will be crazy. Uh, so glad to get back to her. I know that, um, I'm sure everybody has seen that there is a public engagement for the comp plan that has been moved to February ninth. I know Allison has put that out there. It was originally scheduled on the twenty-eighth. It's been a lot up to February ninth. That will be at the library at six PM. Is that wrapped at six PM? So, um, hoping that we'll get some more public engagement turnout before the final public engagement? Or do we think there's going to be a fourth? Have we talked about?
That'll be the final workshop.
That'll be the final workshop, so final workshop on the, on the ninth. Um, and that's, and that's it. That's all I have, uh, for myself. So we do have a need to go into, um, executive session this evening. So can I get a motion to move into executive session to discuss personnel in terms and conditions of employment? And then, um. Specific ways, yes. Specific personnel in terms of condition of employment as well as salary compensation. Um, and then we will, with no action being taken, we will adjourn from there. Can I get a vote? So. I have first out trustee Aaron and second out trustee Lundy. Go call please. Trustee Aaron?
Aye.
Trustee Lundy?
Aye.
Trustee Bonnie?
Aye.
Trustee Walter?
Aye.
Trustee Shomess?
Aye.
Thank you, we'll pass it.